We're still missing Michael.
And Jesse.
Jesse's here.
Oh, okay.
But he's muted and doesn't have his camera on.
Okay, so are we rolling now or? I don't see us on.
Yes, sir, we are. It'll take a second, it's a delay.
Okay.
But we are rolling. We're streaming, we're rolling.
Okay, from what I hear, we are rolling. So at this point, I will. We'll open the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting for Tuesday, May 19th, 2020, and this is being held on via teleconference. We have, there's four of the three other commissioners and myself. Here, we're still waiting for, to see if Michael Lucas is going to be able to join us. So, so we do have a quorum, so I'll call the, I'll call the meeting to order. Let me just check and see if we are going out over the air because I, I don't have confirmation on my screen. So Scott, are we, can you tell if we are rolling or?
As he says, we're, we are.
Yes, we are streaming on the channel and we are on the air.
And we have Michael now too.
Okay, okay, so great, so we have a full.
Yeah, you are.
Okay, thanks, so we have a full commission. And then, um, do we have, um, so the meeting is called to order, all commissioners are present. Do we have any planning commissioner announcements? Anybody would like to make an announcement here?
No.
No? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. At this point, we'll open the meeting up for public comment, for public participation. The members of the community can, um, can participate either through, through the, the website, or they can telephone in to 408-638-0968, or 669-900-6833, or 346-248-7799. And the webinar ID is 827-2274-7698. And the password is 135692, and press nine to raise, raise your hand for public comment. So if everybody has gotten all that, would like to call in, please do. So Bob, do we have anybody in the queue?
Yes, sir, we have one person in the crew queue with their hand raised.
Okay, well, uh, let's allow them in to speak to the public comment. This is also for the consent calendar.
All right, Chuck?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, my name is Chuck Harkins and I am commenting on the, I think the number one thing that you have coming up for 405 Atascadero Road. And this is for a housing project that is affordable. And I've expressed my opinion before in regards to this, and having the parking areas large enough to be able to accommodate the people that will be in this complex. I've walked the streets many times from Sunset and Atascadero Road area, the frontage road. I see six or seven vehicles parked there. And I realized that when you put in 35 units, you're going to have more than 35 vehicles. And 33 parking spaces originally, I don't know what the new one is because I haven't been able to review anything because it isn't open to be able to go and look at the new plans. But I'm concerned about the parking. Even if you take Rockview, you pave it, you put no parking signs, you gotta think people are gonna park there. Most people have two cars, most families have two earners, that's the only way they can survive with certain amounts of income. So I'm just concerned about where are you gonna park all these cars? And how are you gonna be able to accommodate all of them? And I know the last meeting, they talked about putting in plugs for electric cars? I mean, really? If you're under 30,000 a year, you're gonna be able to afford an electric car? I can't afford one. And so why would we think that we need electric plugins for charging cars? I just wanted to kind of kick it out there again, and I realized that it's probably gonna happen, but I'm just, it's gonna really, really complicate this particular corner. Public transportation, somebody works in slow, I don't think they're gonna get there at 5:00 AM in the morning because buses don't run. There's a lot of issues that would need to be addressed to make this feasible. Maybe there's other things I don't know yet, but from what I've gleaned from my knowledge and what I've done research on and looked at the building that was initially proposed, I'm just not real sure that I would like to have that on the corner. And I don't think that's the way to welcome guests to Morro Bay with cars parked everywhere on the streets. There isn't even enough parking for people across the street from, from the different trailer parks. So putting in more units is going to obviously create more of a parking situation. Thank you very much for listening to me, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, Chuck, thank you very much for your comment. Do we have anybody else in the queue?
Yes, sir, there are two other people in the queue, but their hands are not raised.
Okay, we'll give them this option to hit the button with. And going, going, gone, okay, we're closing public comment at this point. So as far as speaking to 405 Atascadero Road, thanks for your comment, like I said, but at this point, we can't really address that, it's not before us. So I'm sure there will be time to look at that project when it comes up before us again. So stay tuned and keep, you know, keep connected on this and we'll be happy to listen to your comments and, and take them under advisement. Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent calendar, we have two items, A1 and A2. And A1 is the current advanced planning processing list, and A2 is approval of the minutes for the planning commission meeting of February 18th. Do we have, anybody wish to pull those items or any, any part of those items? Okay, everybody, nobody raised their hand, so can, may I have a motion?
I'll move to approve, Michael moved to approve. One of us is moving to approve A1 and A2.
Okay, we'll give that honor to you, Susan, Michael, do you want to do the second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, any, any comment on that? Or any discussion?
One thing I wanted to note is, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but on our, on our planning sheet there, it does say that the Hasslow project that was just discussed is up for June 2nd.
It is coming to the next meeting.
Okay, great, we'll, we'll be, have plenty to discuss then. Okay, Scott, could you call the, call the, the roll on this?
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Ngrapia?
Aye.
Jared Loer?
Uh, yes.
Motion passed as 5-0.
5-0, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, I, item number B, we have public hearings, there's none scheduled. So we'll move on to item number C, where we have one, one item on that, which is a new business, it's item C1. It's the planning commission review of the general, for the general plan conformity for the purchase of the two vacant lots located on the west side of Highway 1 at the north edge of the city, also known as Dog Beach. Do you have a presentation for this, Scott?
I do, I'm gonna share my screen and we'll see if we can't get this up.
Okay.
Well, for the best.
Adventures in technology.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so as you stated, this is a, a general plan conformance finding requirement for the city's purchase of the two Dog Beach lots at the north end of town. You, the lots, the map on the screen, the lots are represented by lots 6SW and 6NW. 6SW is located inside city limits, and 6NW is located in the county, but within the city's sphere of influence. You'll also see the big lot 1 that spans Highway 1, and I would note that as part of the larger conservation effort on the Chevron property area, those lots have, within the last month or so, conveyed to the county. Just as a point of information. You know, as I indicated, the city's been involved for many years on the conservation effort of portions of the larger Chevron, you know, Stero Marine Terminal property. We've been engaged in negotiations with the Trust for Public Lands, Chevron, obviously, Cayuga Sanitary District, Cayuga's Land Conservancy, Land Conservancy of San Luis Obispo, and the County of San Luis Obispo. And more recently, in, in January of this year, council authorized the city manager to sign a non-winding memorandum of understanding with the CSD and Chevron and TPL, in order to carry out kind of the first phase of these preservation efforts. That MOU is provided as an attachment to your staff report. There's kind of form maintenance in the MOU, and I'm kind of giving you this background information so people would understand why we're doing this. So it involves that acquisition of lot 6SW, that's the lot inside city limits. It's currently owned by the CSD, Cayuga Sanitary District, was conveyed to them by Chevron. It will be likely conveyed to the city through the Trust for Public Lands by a direct deed through a purchase agreement, which will be probably going to council in a, in a month or two from now. There, the second piece of it was amendment to the city's sphere of influence. That would include the five lots above panorama, planning commission is familiar with these, you've seen them as part of the, the review of the draft general plan, and, and those lots are included as draft share of influence in the draft land use plan or the draft general plan. The idea would be that those lots would each accommodate a single family home, and that those homes would be directed and deed restricted towards the lower portion of those lots, preserving the remainder of the hillside and the backdrop of the city, that's kind of the intent behind that, and I think planning commissions had many conversations about this past. Three would be the detachment of 6 Northeast, a detachment is, the lot 6 Northeast is on the opposite side of 6 Northwest, and it houses the, the CSD's lift station, and so the detachment would take it out of the city's, the city limits and move it back into the county. That process has to be authorized, the application has to be authorized by council, and then approved through LAFCO. And then there would be the annexation of lot 6 Northwest, so I mean, we purchased it, it would be annexed into the city. That would also have to be authorized, submit an application to the, to LAFCO for that annexation, council would have to authorize that. That will be a future action that goes back to council for authorization, in not too distant future, I hope. And then, again, the city council will, will be reviewing a purchase agreement for the two Dog Beach lots, but before that can happen, we have to come before the planning commission, which is why we're here today, for the planning commission to provide a finding of conformance with the general plan for the purchase of those lots. And that requirement comes out of California Government Code, Section 65402A. The, the specific language of that section is provided in the staff report. So the, the dinner plant land use designation for 6 Southwest is open space recreation, zoning is open space OA1 plan development. 6 Northwest is again located in the county and has a designation for, of recreation. And again, I remind you that 6 Northwest is in the city's sphere of influence. Moving forward, the general plan doesn't have any policies that suggest the property be used for any other purpose than open space. I'll also note that the city was successful in receiving a grant for a portion of the purchase price from the California Coastal Conservancy, in the amount of $150,000. Along with that money comes a requirement for a deed restriction to use the property for public purposes. All that being said, I think the planning commission, it can make the requisite findings that the, the purchase of the property is in conformance with the general plan, and staff recommends adoption of the attached resolution to the staff report. Without it, I'd be happy to certainly answer any questions.
Okay, at this point, do we have any questions for, for Scott? Michael?
Scott, these are just general questions. In the presentation, if you look on page 15 of 32, it's, it's the map that shows all of these parcels. Just so everyone's familiar, lot 1 that you discussed is going into Conservancy, that's the intent of the county?
That's correct, yes. You know, the, the beach lot will continue to be used, the beach portion of lot 1 will be continued to be used for public purposes, and then the other portion of it, they'll probably program some use on that in the future.
And then you mentioned 6 Northeast as part of their, their utility infrastructure for the CSD. What about, what about 7N, is that the actual utility as well? Do you know what the disposition of that one is?
Yeah, let me, I'm gonna bring my screen back up again, hold on a second. Let's see here.
This is, I'm looking at page 15 of 32 on the.
Yeah, I was just gonna bring up the map. So 6 Northeast and 6N were originally part of the, the same property. What had happened is they, they did a public law process to, to split them, I believe. But lot 6 Northeast is the portion that's in the city limit.
Okay, so 7N was never in the city limits?
Correct.
Okay, and then the, on that same image that you have there, the five panorama lots are not shown on there in the purple color, that's a future for.
Yeah, that's correct, so the, the five panoramas actually aren't in the purple, they'd be in the, there was no color there, and you see like lot 1 at the very bottom of the screen?
Right.
And then they kind of wrap around panorama from there. The actual map is attached as an exhibit that shows all of the lots in the MOU, I believe.
And on the last page where you've got, I think it's called B2, attachment B2, it's at the very end of the staff report. It looks like, or if you want to look at that, that one that's up there, it looks like there's a gap between lot 6SW and the Moro Strand State Beach. In other words, we don't butt, but the state beach, there's a, there's a separate piece in there. Can you fill me in on, on who, who owns that, is that a private parcel?
Um, so where are you looking at that on the page?
If you look at page 19, or page 28 of 32.
28 of 32.
It's a large map that has all the parcels on it, and I think it articulates the five panorama parcels in the.
Oh.
They've changed the colors here from purple to, to blue for the ones that we were just looking at.
Michael, I think that might be North Point Park.
Okay, so that's already part of the.
It's on the end of the subdivision there, where you have the divided.
Yeah, the Toro. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, they, that was just informational, because I saw a gap there, and it would've been nice if that had been called out as a park. The only thing, only question I have is, do we, do we take on liability for all of these as soon as they're deeded us, and then who does the programming of that?
We do, we're required to come up with a management plan through the coastal conservancy grants, I think we have a couple of years to do that. They have a bunch of examples of ones we can use, we'll be able to do it internally. And yeah, I mean, we're gonna, the intent is to continue to use it as, you know, kind of a passive use beach area. I mean, the city, you know, especially now, doesn't really have the resources to do, you know, much with it, you know, it's, I mean, yeah. The idea is that we have it, it continues, it's continued, you know, it continues in its current use state, and we don't change that. In the future, you know, if, as, you know, grant funding opportunities become available to do, you know, improvements to make parking better over there, or that type of thing, I could see us doing things along those lines, and I think that that's what we would probably put in the management plan that we would adopt later, that would, you know, kind of tell us what the story is moving forward, you know, what our wish lists for that area might be, you know, better traffic receptacles, things like that.
Okay, yeah, that's all I have for now, I have a couple of comments for later on, thanks.
Okay, any other questions for, for Scott? Okay, Scott, I have a.
I have a question, Scott. You know, this is, this isn't a factual question, it's more of a, kind of a strategic question, and it, and it concerns, you know, not the, the Dog Beach properties, but the panorama lots. You know, clearly Chevron's explicitly said that they want very much to have the property ultimately annexed into the city of Morro Bay. And so I manage to see considerable advantage in doing that. But I'm curious as to what your ideas of why Chevron thinks that's advantageous to have it be part of Morro Bay as opposed to part of the unincorporated part of San Luis Obispo County?
My take is they think it adds value, you know, we'll be providing services to it, the main's five lots, not a big deal, I mean, but it would be, you know, we're providing not only water and sewer services, but we'd be providing, you know, police and fire services to it as well. You know, if it was developed in the county, we'd probably still be providing police and fire services through our mutual aid agreements, because it's closer to us than anybody else, really. But yeah, I think that's probably the idea. And that's what they've talked about over time, I mean, they haven't, you know, they think that those make the most sense because they're around, around us. Planning commissioners, you're well aware, you guys have had numerous conversations about the preservation of that, that area in the backdrop to the city, this helps us do some of those things, bringing it forward now, you know, you know, ahead of the, you know, draft general plan at this point, potentially.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for Scott? Okay, I've got one, I've got one, considering the management of both, you know, lot 1 on the, the west, the western portion of lot 1, and then lot 6N, and then lot 6SW, basically the Dog Beach area. How do we have anything here in this, in this process to, to, to basically guarantee that these will be able to be, be accessed as Dog Beach and Dog Exercise Parks? I didn't see anything in the memorandum or anything in the resolution that, that stated that these are presently, you know, off-leash dog, doggies areas, dog park, Dog Beach areas? And then we'd be looking for that as the continued use of that?
We don't have anything that says that in here, no, I mean, that's not part of the process in front of you, actually, I was just trying to give a lot of the background because some of you will be like, what's going on here? Well, this has been a long process, this is a couple of steps as part of that process that we've been going on for years at this point, I've been meeting on this for four years, I think. So yeah, I mean, all, the only thing that we're gonna have recorded on the property that says it's for public use, it doesn't, it's not gonna say it's for a Dog Beach use, but I mean, understanding that, at least my understanding of why that's actually one of the two pieces of property in the city's sphere of influence, was to preserve it as Dog Beach. So, you know, the city went and argued in front of LAFCO when LAFCO did the sphere review back in the early to mid 2000s, and made the argument to, because we had an expansive sphere of influence that went halfway to Atascadero, and they said, hey, that's not gonna work, you don't have resources, water, to expand that far, so you need to snap that back, and we're just gonna snap the whole thing back to the city boundary, and citizens group, I believe, maybe even the city council, I was a little unclear about that, argued, you went and argued the case in front of LAFCO saying, no, we want to preserve this, we want Dog Beach to be part of the city of Morro Bay, we want it to continue to be used as Dog Beach, and so LAFCO allowed that to remain inside the city's sphere of influence for that purpose.
Okay, I'll bring that back up in comment period on this, so unless there's other further questions, then I'll open this up for, to see if we have anybody wishing to comment on this project, or this, this item?
There's one person in the queue, but their hand is not raised.
And that would be council member Davis.
Yes.
Who's also been involved with this process for a very long time, so I think he's hanging out to see what happens.
Okay, great, I'm glad to, glad to see we got an audience here. All right, then, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission to, for comments and, and general, you know, moving this forward, who's, who would like to speak to this item? Michael, you raise your hand here visually?
Yeah, I just, they're, they're making beaches, they say, so anytime I think we can acquire a beach, I think that's, that's probably a very good thing, especially when it's in front of somebody else's land. So I, I, I like, I like the general idea, I, I would be very cautious though, in, in what my, my colleague, I love Commissioner Lur. My experience on that beach is not, it's not been a good experience. We've got a lot of liability exposure there, and, and I hope that we've got some kind of plan in between the cars that get dinged and broken into, and the, the amount of people with no knowledge of what their animal can do on that beach is pretty shocking. And it's very aggressive there, I don't go there anymore, I used to go there quite a bit, and I think we've got to be very cautious that when we take it over, we've got a plan to sign it and make sure that people are aware of the issues there. It's turned into a lot of visitor serving, almost exclusively kind of use, it was jam-packed there last weekend, you know, I bet there were 30 cars in there, and I'm not quite sure where the line is between lot 1 and 6N, or 6 Southwest, relative to some of those parking concerns, but you know, that's the high-speed Route 1 and those cars there right off the road, it's, it's a real issue. I hope we can get some kind of funding to proceed with something to control it better, but that's my only concern, I'm, I'm all for moving ahead with it, those are just my concerns down the line.
Okay, Jesse?
Yeah, I share those concerns, I actually used to drive that stretch of highway every day, two, three times a day, and I agree, it could be, it could be slower, and I know that's a Caltrans issue, not a city of Morro Bay issue, but as, you know, moving forward, you know, we ought to at least enter, enter some kind of conversation that may slow traffic down, or, you know, when we get our wish lists and we get some parking over there, maybe look into some kind of mechanisms to, well, recommend some kind of mechanisms to Caltrans on what they could do to slow traffic down over there. But I'm all for it, I think this is kind of more of a formality than anything, I, I'm happy to see this moving forward, and I'm all for it.
Okay, Joseph, did you have any?
Sure, you know, likewise, I, I just think it's a, it's a great opportunity, and I, like most of the citizens of Morro Bay, will be pleased if these two properties are finally within, you know, the authority of, of Morro Bay. The only other thought I had, you know, related to my, my question to Scott about the ultimate, the ultimate decision on the, on the panorama lots, I, I've said a number of times that, and I realize that's kind of, it's premature at this point, but since it is in the, is in the, they do reference it in the document, I, I just think it's really essential before any real discussions are made about the annexation issue of the, of the panorama lots, that there be a really specific and clear understanding with Chevron as to what are the agreed-upon limitations that will be placed on that property with respect to development. There has to be an understanding before annexation, I, I think. You know, because I, because I think there, there may be some legal issues if the discussions take place afterwards, and there's a stalemate between Chevron and the city over what they should or shouldn't do with that lot, those, those are my. Those, those are my thoughts.
Okay, uh, Joseph, that's not, that item isn't before us right now, but I think, you know, I share your concerns on that.
Yeah.
Susan, did you have a wish, have any comments on this?
No, no, I think you guys covered it.
Okay, then my comments on this, Scott, is I'm just, I'm concerned about the continued operation of this as a, as a dog beach. And, you know, I'm, I've been taking a dog, I've been taking a dog there since, you know, well, I've been taking multiple dogs and most of their lives there. So, um, and one of the problems we've seen is we've seen beaches that were, where dog use was allowed being restricted more and more. Um, you know, the area north of, north of the Rock used to be, you, you know, dogs used to be allowed there. You know, I think they're allowed for a short portion on leash, you know, now for a short portion, but they're still not allowed between below State Park. And then, um, there's a section there where you can, where it's still illegal to have a dog on the beach. And then north, you know, in the state park areas, they're not allowed at all. Um, so if, you know, also north of Cayucus, there was an issue there where, where the land went, where there was a private development. It, it went under the land, you know, we had, we had as a community a chance to, to get that land back into open space. It, it happened. We, uh, you know, I was peripherally involved in that. Uh, promises were made that that was gonna be, remain as a dog access, uh, beach and, and area. And then as soon as, as soon as the, the deed was done, uh, immediately there was restrictions where no dogs were allowed at all. And, you know, uh, I'm still stinging from that. So, um, so if there's any way that we could include in this resolution some statement that dog beach is actually, you know, a dog access beach and there, and people need to be aware that there are, there are rules and there's, you know, when you take your dog to a beach, you're, you're responsible for them. And there's, you know, there's a common, common courtesy and actually legal rights that you're, that have to pertain to, uh, you have to follow. But, you know, Scott, can we do something in this resolution to just state that, that one of the reasons we're, we're doing this is to continue this as a, as a use for, for a dog, dog, uh, park slash beach?
Um, well, it doesn't have anything to do with, uh, you know, general plan consistency finding.
No, it doesn't.
We could, as opposed to a finding, I, we could put it in one of the whereas's, um, if you, if you'd like. I, I have no problem doing that. Um, basically, you know, I mean, you, you need to, in three, at least three, you need to agree to do that. Um, given some concerns noted by one of the other commissioners, commissioners. Um, uh, but if you wanted to do that, I could put it in the whereas section. Um, be happy to put something along the lines of what you talked about, meaning that, you know, the, I, the, the preferred, you know, outcome of this is the continued use of the dog beaches as a dog beach. Um, I mean, I'd be happy to put that, you know, in there. It kind of, it kind of tells a little bit of the story, right? That's what you can do with the whereas section sometimes.
Yeah, I would, I would be happier with it as a whereas, you know, especially concerning, just to give the indication that this was, this is our thoughts on this, you know, it's important enough that we annex it. I think it's important enough that we state, you know, a reason why we're, we're trying to annex it so that we can keep the protection on it as, you know, for, for dog exercise and preferably mostly for our local, local community. And I think one of the issues we have right now and I, it is that, is that every, you know, most places have been closed down because COVID-19. And so we're getting an ex, you know, we're getting, you know, a lot of the community outs, that comes from outside of this area is funneled in to that area a, as, as an outlet, as an exercise area, you know, and, you know, just to get out and about. And, um, so I've seen a lot more activity there than over the last five weeks than I've seen, you know, at any point earlier. So, uh, so if we can do that as a whereas, um, you know, where do we?
Why don't you, uh, poll some of your other commissioners there and see what their, uh, interest or lack thereof for your concept is?
Yep, so, uh, do, anybody wish to comment on that? Jesse?
I'm, I'm fine with that as long as it doesn't hold everything up.
Yeah, me too.
As long as we're going along and, uh, keeping the process going on, I can go along with that.
Okay, Joseph?
Yeah, and I would very much like it to remain, uh, a dog beach and anything that can, uh, you know, reinforce that now. Sure, I'm for that.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to the dogs being there. I, I think some of the areas though, at some point, uh, you know, it's a, it's a part of the Pacific coast and, and dogs aren't allowed on some of our beaches for ecological reasons, other species and things like that. And I think there's a lot of, uh, potential on these sites that's not there now because of the way they've been degraded either by the remnants of the Chevron operations or there's opportunities there. We're not into that discussion with this. I'm, I'm fine to have it as a whereas. I think we need to be, need to be cautious that, uh, you know, we don't, uh, guarantee something else wonderful happening there by, by making it exclusively a dog use or something like that.
Okay, uh, Susan?
Um, I, I think I kind of agree with Michael. Um, I see the value of the dog beach and I know that people love it. I also understand that dogs and their owners don't always behave really well. Um, and, you know, who knows what we're gonna see with sea level rise and all kinds of environmental and ecological changes there. So I'm happy to go along with it. I'm not sure how I feel about tying it down specifically to be a dog beach, but...
I think, well, I mean, my, so it makes you like provide some clarity there. My idea was that we would just continue to allow access for folks with dogs to the beach. Wasn't gonna be the exclusive use of the beaches for people with dogs, um, that makes it any better.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I'm not talking about, you know, packs and packs of dogs to be living on the beach or anything on their own and stuff. That, you know, we're basically dealing with, you know, the, there are very limited options and they're getting less throughout the state for places to go where you can get wholesome exercise with your dog. So, and this is one of them and I think it's a gem on the entire coast. And it has been, it hasn't had that use for as long as I can remember, as long as I've been here. So I would just want to see that, that there's some notification of that and that there's, you know, that is, that it would be noted that this would be one of the uses that we would like to see continued there. So, so Scott, do you have, do you want specific wording or do you want to? Um, I'm sorry, Scott, I couldn't hear you.
Sorry, I would help by unmuted. Um, yeah, no, I think I have, I have sufficient direction. And including it in the whereas section, it's not a finding that, you know, you make a finding that it's gonna be something's forever in perpetuity. It's a little bit different thing. That's not what you're doing, but the whereas is, tells part of the story. Um, so I'm thinking I'm comfortable if you're comfortable.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm good with that. Um, so do we need a motion on this?
Uh, we need a, yeah, we need a motion. I need a second. Uh, we need to include that we're gonna add that as the whereas, um, uh, and, uh, and the vote.
Okay, anybody, uh, interested in making the motion?
I'll, I'll, I'll do it, Scott. Which page do you have the, uh, the text on?
I don't have the staff report open in front of me now, sorry.
It's on nineteen.
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 Yeah. I propose we adopt a resolution number PC twelve dash twenty, uh, finding that the acquisition of the two lots proposed for purchase by the city of Morro Bay is consistent with the Morro Bay general plan and including additional language as a, uh, the whereas, we're looking?
Whereas.
Whereas, uh, it has had historic and continuing use as a, as a place for dogs and their owners. So that, that part of our endorsement includes that that be, uh, consideration in its future uses.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Okay, I think we're good. Uh, then Scott, you, could you call the question?
Uh, Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Brian? Commissioner Engraffia?
Aye.
Chair Lur?
Uh, yes, okay, motion passes, uh, five zero. Uh, thank you guys. Okay, moving on, the next item is unfinished business and, um, seeing none. And then the next item is, uh, planning commissioner comments and future agenda items. Um, any commissioners want, wish to, uh, Jesse?
Keep going back and forth and program, program after, keep clicking on, sorry about that. I just want to make sure everybody knows, uh, I've been tasked as a disaster service worker for the county, uh, through the month of June. Um, my schedule will be probably prohibiting me from attending meetings in June, so I'm likely to miss those two meetings.
Okay, uh, thanks Jesse. And any other, uh, comments or announcements? Okay, uh, Scott, do you have anything to add?
Um, no, well, yeah, I got one thing to add. Um, you know, as far as, you know, where we're at with regard to, um, you know, the, the state and county orders with regard to opening things up. Um, you know, the, uh, the county submitted, uh, an attestation today to the state, um, in hopes of opening up the remainder of what, what is, um, phase two in the, in the governor's plan reopening. And that would, um, incorporate, uh, access, um, for seating inside restaurants and for patrons to come inside of retail, um, establishments as opposed to doing curbside only, which is where we're at right now. Um, and, uh, we expect, uh, likely expect to hear back, um, you know, from the state prior to this weekend. It's a big meek weekend, Memorial Day, right? Um, so, uh, we're expecting that to happen and we are planning accordingly, um, including, uh, providing additional messaging. We're gonna have additional police officers out on the street. Um, we're having, we have some handout things for folks, uh, you know, as it relates to distancing and, and those types of things. Uh, we're working on a sort of public outreach campaign, um, because as you all are aware, there, you know, the last couple of weekends has been pretty busy. Um, we anticipate this coming weekend to be pretty busy. Um, and so that's kind of what we're looking at and planning for moving forward. I don't have anything beyond that.
All right, um, we'll all look forward to seeing what the rules are gonna be, you know, see where, see where it stands. It seems like we've been getting inundated here with, uh, um, with visitors and...
There's a lot of information on the county's website related to that, including the county's order on, uh, visitors for vacation rental and hotels, limiting occupancy to fifty percent. Um, it's supposed to be fifty percent, but only supposed to be essential workers, family members, folks coming into town, taking care of family members, those types of things. Um, I'm not gonna speak to how enforcement of that actually works. Um, but the fifty percent thing we can probably, you know, pull off. And my understanding is the county's actually gonna be enforcing countywide, um, meaning they're gonna be doing spot checks of hotels and all the communities, um, through their code enforcement efforts. Uh, I had maybe the sheriff's office, I don't know. Um, but they said that they're gonna be doing some enforcement, we're gonna be doing, um, some of our own checks. I know our, our fire department's gonna be walking and talking to our, uh, hoteliers, uh, about what the requirements are, um, as an educational, um, outreach efforts, uh, starting, I think, tomorrow even. Um, so we're trying to get the message out, so we'll see where it goes.
Okay, and what's, uh, you know, what's going on with the boat, the boat on trap? Do you have any information on that, Scott? Just for public con, information?
Nothing other than, I mean, we, you know, we, we kind of had, we weren't really sure what we were doing for a while and then now we have it back open for anybody's use, basically. Um, the idea was that when we, we're kind of trying to, to limit it to the local folks versus folks from outside of the area that we ran into some legal questions, the, whether we could actually do that or not. Um, uh, because it wasn't specifically part of the governor's order, so it was a little unclear what we would've been enforcing there. So we changed tact on that. Um, and we don't have any specific additional order that comes out of the county that addresses it. So, um, we've been allowing everybody to use it.
Okay, uh, if there's, if there is any other questions, then, uh, we'll move to adjourn here. Any last chance, guys? Okay.
Thanks everybody.
Um, we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled, uh, planning commission meeting on June second. And, uh, um, I imagine we're gonna still be on tele, teleconference on this, Scott?
I think you can anticipate that for the next couple of months.
Okay, great. All right, uh, thanks everybody and, uh, stay safe and, uh, talk to you soon.
Bye, everybody.
You're welcome.